Good evening and welcome to the May 19, 2025, meeting of the city's Summit Zoning Board of Adjustment. My name is Scott Loicets, and I am the Chair of the Zoning Board. Please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in the Constitution, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. In accordance with Nutracy statute 10:4-10, adequate notice of this special meeting has been provided to a newspaper record that has been posted here in City Hall. This meeting is a judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to the issues that are relevant to what the Board may legally consider in reaching a decision, and decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. For the benefit of the interested public, this meeting is being livestreamed on the city's YouTube page, also broadcast on Summit's government channel, which is Comcast Channel 34, Verizon Channel 30. Transcript of this meeting is also being taken by using video and audio, so we need all speakers to utilize one of the microphones in the room. Please note that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room where you entered. City has a listening system to assist the hearing impaired. Anyone needs hearing assistance, please obtain the system of the DAIS, return it after. Nicole, could you please call the roll of members?
Mr. Kirin?
Here.
Mr. Malay?
Here.
Mr. Nelson?
Here.
Mr. Steiner is excused. Mr. Yuko is excused. Ms. Chifo?
Here.
Mr. Faskins is excused. Ms. Chanchuli?
Here.
Mr. Nearing?
Here.
Vice Chair Zahn is excused. Chairman Loicets?
Here.
You have a quorum, you may proceed.
Thank you, Nicole. Andy Ball is typically our zoning board's attorney, but he's being aptly represented by Zach Stazinski tonight. Welcome back, Zach, we're happy to have you. Zach or Andy advises the Board on matters of law and is the key interface with the applicant's attorney. Normally, the attorney does not vote, not normally, never does the attorney vote on the applications. Nicole Cotiga is a city employee and is acting as zoning board secretary. For one more meeting, correct? That's right. Our board secretary works with the applicants on preparing applications, planning our agendas, and keeping our meeting minutes. Board secretary also does not vote on applications. Also present are experts who are hired annually by the Board to provide input to the Board. Tonight, we have Marie Raffa from Colliers Engineering. Also present is Tom Behrens from Burgess Associates, and he is our Board Planner. These experts are seated at table to the right of the Board, the public's left. They also do not vote on applications. Our Board consists of seven regular members and up to four alternates. All members can participate in the hearings tonight, but only a maximum of seven can vote. Most applications require a simple majority to be approved. Before we enter into executive session to vote on the application, you'll be advised of how many votes are required for approval. Each case will begin with the applicant or their attorney giving an overview of the application process to date and the variants that are required. We then hear from any additional expert witnesses the applicant may have to help explain the application and why the variances are needed. The Board experts, followed by the Board members, then may ask questions of the applicant, their attorney, and their expert witnesses. Due to recent cases running excessively long, we strongly encourage applicants and their experts to give brief and concise testimony, so we may get to as many cases as possible in a given evening. Once the Board members and the Board professionals have completed their questioning, the public will have an opportunity to ask questions. This is not the time to tell us what you think about this case. That opportunity comes at the end of the hearing. Please be careful how you phrase your questions. They should not be proceeded with a statement about the case, but should be a direct question to the witness. Also, before you ask your questions, please clearly state your name, spell your last name, and provide your address. It's important that our court reporter be able to keep a clear and accurate public record. After all witnesses have been heard, members of the audience have their second opportunity to speak, and at that time, you may express your opinion, positive or negative, about the application. Then the public hearing is closed, and we enter into executive session. This is where the Board members discuss the case and then vote. You'll be able to listen to our executive session, but you will not be able to participate in our discussion. I ask now that each applicant and their attorney, if present, come up and give a brief synopsis of their anticipated testimony tonight, including the number of witnesses and whether or not they think they can finish within 30 minutes. Everyone says they can, but it's not always the case. We will begin this evening with 20 Van Dyke Place. Thank you.
Hi, everybody.
Welcome.
I'm Tim Klessi, I'm the architect.
Yes, sir.
Don't have an engineer.
My name's Christine Skelkotis.
And I'm Dimitris Skelkotis.
Okay.
And we think we're under heaven.
Perfect, great, thank you so much. Be with you shortly. Can we hear from Representatives for 11 Plain Street, please?
Good evening, Karthik Jairan, the applicant for 11 Plain Street. I have one witness, Alex Rodriguez. It should be done by 30 minutes.
All right, great, thank you so much. And then next, we have 45 Franklin Place.
I'm Hillary Als and Amanda Wolf from Dempsey, Dempsey &amp; Sheehan, representing Williams Family Trust, 45 Franklin Place. We have the owners and three professionals. I would say 45 minutes to an hour.
Thanks, Hillary. And then finally, 9 Stony Hill Court. Good evening.
Hey, I'm Jonas Carr.
I'm Hope Carr.
I'm John Genokio, the architect.
Okay, great. Is he your only witness tonight?
Yes.
Okay, perfect.
Thank you.
Do you think he'll finish in 30 minutes, Rose?
For sure.
All right, thank you, guys. All right, let us begin then with 20 Van Dyke Place. Great, our attorney's gonna swear you in and can tell us a little bit about your case, and then you can let your architect go through the details.
Please raise your hand. Can you just state your name and spell your last name, please? Oh, yeah, we have the spelling. Can you just state your name?
Christine Skelkotis.
Dimitris Skelkotis.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Great, tell us a little bit about your project.
We have refurbished the property, 20 Van Dyck Place, and we wanted to make sure that it beautified the neighborhood. We have two tenants in this dwelling. We had a chicken wire fence around the property, and it was actually, no offense, ugly. We wanted to beautify the property again, so for safety reasons, the second floor tenant has a six-year-old son, and as we were fixing the property, we noticed there was a lot of children on that corner of the road. So we thought that the best thing to do was replace the fence, not understanding that we actually violated any compliance issues. We just were trying to respect the property and the aesthetics of it. So the first important thing for us all to know is there's children in this neighborhood. There's at least 10 children that I see every time I go to the property. So we're very concerned that a three-foot concrete retaining wall and a child jumping off it could easily break their arm, their wrist, what have you, and that would be in horror for us personally that that would happen. Second item, the safety and residence of the tenants themselves. Right now, there's only a second floor that has a very young child. We wanted to improve, obviously, the design of the property, and that's why we chose the slotted approach rather than, obviously, a solid approach. And then we were concerned, obviously, for the visibility of going through that area. It seems to be a cut-through property, road, and obviously, to the neighbors, we didn't want to, we wanted to make sure that people are slowing down as well. And overall, on the project that we've been doing, the neighborhood has been approaching our contractor and saying they really appreciated the improvements that we've made to the property and to that neighborhood. So lastly, again, on the good faith effort, we did not know we were not in compliance, and we wanted to just retain, you know, the fence and not make it a chicken wire fence.
Great, thank you so much. Tom, Marie, do you have any questions for this witness?
No.
Okay, great. Questions from the Board for these witnesses?
I just have a quick one.
Sure.
How long have you owned the property?
We bought it in 20 during COVID.
Was there a fence there? Was there a solid fence there or just what you?
It was really ugly chicken wire fence with like metal.
The reason why I ask is I remember my best friends grew up next door, and I remember there being a fence there.
Yeah, it was.
There was a solid fence there.
Prior to, it was an estate sale.
Right.
Apparently, the gentleman and daughter passed away, and the ex-wife was selling the property. And, you know, we just bought it as is and put a lot into it.
Yeah, my recollection is there's always been a fence there.
Yeah, there's always been a fence there, but it was a very ugly chicken wire fence, yes.
Any other questions?
I do have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I listened to the comments from the, sorry, the comments from the Planner. It said it was 25% openings. I looked at it, it looked like it was a lot more than 25%.
So I can provide clarification as far as what the ordinance allows and what seems to be there? Right, so to your point, the fence that exists is a four-foot-high picket fence. Looks like it's about 50% open, I'm estimating based on the images.
That's what I estimated as well.
Which means there's a panel and a space of about the same amount that are ultimately.
And then right up, it said 25%, that's why?
Well, the ordinance allows up to 25% opening, or closing, rather, when it's along the property and running the front yard.
Okay.
So that would be like a post and rail style fence or raw iron.
I understand, okay.
Opposed to skinny, you have more space between, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Let's see, anything else? Do we have any questions? Questions only from the audience for these witnesses? Seeing none. All right, great. You're up, yes, we'll get you sworn in. I'm C.
Thank you, just state your name, spell your last name.
It's Timothy Klessi, K-L-E-S-S-E.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
If you could just give a brief qualifications of your.
I have a degree in architecture and actually in interior design, and I'm licensed in New Jersey and New York, and been licensed for, I guess, about 30 years now. I'm getting kind of old, and my license is in good standing. I appear to some of this board before.
We've seen you a couple of times here, yeah. All right.
Do we want to accept this expert?
We will, thank you, welcome.
Thank you, thanks. So I have, there's a neighbor here, and I just spoke to the neighbor, and the neighbor has some comments, so I'll try to go quickly so that the neighbor can get in.
If you just take the microphone out, and then there's like a little switch, you can just, on the side.
You have to sing a little bit.
I'll let this guy do that.
Okay, so I assembled, the owner built the fence without a permit, that's what we're here. The fence was installed illegally, right? They didn't realize, but it was installed illegally. And the fence in the front yard should be 75% open, right? 25% closed, and it is, I think about 50/50. I think that's what is going on. It looks like we're only 50% open. But what's going on, this drawing is exactly the same as the drawing that you have in your packet. And I went back in the upper left-hand corner here, and I found the old chicken wire fence. And the old chicken wire fence is, I got it off of an old Google map, and the chicken wire fence looks bad, but it actually is pretty good in some ways because it lets a lot of light through, you know, lets the light to pass through. But that is the chicken wire fence that they were replacing. And it's these actual four pictures that are also within your packet. And then what they did is they came and they built this four-foot-high, I'm gonna say 50% open PVC fence, and if you look at the site plan in the middle, they ran, they removed the picket fence from the upper corner, came all the way down around Van Dyck, came to the corner where the hydrant is, and then they went to the right, and they went up to where the sidewalk is. And then from the sidewalk to the driveway, they added fence. There was no fence there previously, okay? So this section that's to the left of the walkway before the driveway was added, and I think the fence itself, I guess I'll go on just a little bit, but I'll do it quick. The second exhibit is just one that I went back over there on Tuesday, just to take a look at, last Tuesday, to take a look at everything, just to see what it looked like as it kind of weathered in a little bit. And this is really an exhibit I need to mark for you. I guess I'd call it A1?
Yes.
And I'll just describe it, it's four photos of the existing site, and I labeled them A, B, C, and D, and really, they look exactly the same as the previous photos. There's been no change at all, except it's kind of grown in a little. And on the left side of the walkway in my photo B, you can see that area, the fence and the wall that was added. Now, there, there's a neighbor, a neighbor that lives up the street who's worried about the traffic on the street, and it appears that this street is a little bit of a cut-through. And also, within both of the reports, there's comment about sort of protecting the site triangle of the corner, you know? And I think with that in mind, we would like to propose to cut the corner on a 45, you know, from, you know, maybe, I'm saying about 15 feet in on each side, and that would allow that, the site to still be visible in the corner, and we could just use the pieces of fence we have and swing them around and do it. And I don't know, the neighbor is here, and I'm sure they'll have comment, and that's the only comment that I can see that came out of the reports that came, but both reports from both of the professionals, both were asking related to the site triangle, and I was hoping this could address that problem. And I guess with that in mind, I'd like to close for now, so we can move this along a little bit.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Tom?
I think we understand the gist of the application. I would just ask, and you guys have alluded to it a bit, if the Board were to grant the variance, would you help them understand specifically, I guess, the hardships impacting the property and to our public benefits? Again, you kind of touched on a few of it, I think, climbing, whether it's from an aesthetic standpoint, functional, some of the considerations you guys offered.
Can I respond?
You have any thoughts?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
Well, you can respond.
I guess, oh, sorry. I guess from, to answer your question, it was safety on my part, and also, you know, they parked their vehicles in the back, and I just get really concerned with the snow and everything, that if they didn't see like a fence in front of them, that they might go too close, so that was another safety issue that.
That's why we did the Belgium blocks too, to stop the cars.
Only on purpose put the Belgium blocks in front.
We spent a lot of time there, and the kids are in the street all the time playing, which is awesome to see.
Yes.
But as kids, you know, oh, let's go jump off the retaining wall.
And I'm like, no.
And that's what worry does a lot, especially with the young adult, the young little kid that's upstairs with the young family that's upstairs. You just want to be as safe as possible you can. We thought the slats, you know, didn't hinder the visibility too much, and again, we were replacing an existing fence that we thought was already kind of grandfathered in or approved, so.
But we also think that the fence is aesthetically pleasing.
Yeah.
More aesthetically pleasing than the chicken wire.
Yeah, we wanted to beautify the neighborhood, that was our objective as well. The house was a lime green, broken paneling, and, you know, we wanted to come in and have a quality product.
And it's a corner lot, I really don't have a rear yard for the children, so the front yard in the sense of a corner lot becomes the rear yard in this case.
Okay, great, thank you. Questions for this witness?
Yeah, I have a couple.
Oh, go ahead, Marie, sorry about that.
Could you clarify how tall the retaining wall is, the landscape wall, and the fence on top of it? on top of it?
The highest point of the, the highest point of the retaining wall is two foot six high and the fence is four feet high.
Yeah, yeah, but we're sorry.
Yeah. The retaining wall definitely slopes.
So six foot six total at the highest?
At the corner.
At the, at the.
That's where it's at.
Well, you can point if you want to.
I thought it was highest here.
Yes.
Yeah.
This is the highest point, the corner.
The corner should be the, would be.
The corner where I'm talking about adding the site triangle. That's where the retaining wall is.
That looked like it was more than thirty inches though, that wall.
No, I measured it.
I was there today.
This is three feet.
I didn't measure it, but it looked higher. Was that retaining wall always there or did you put?
The retaining wall.
The retaining wall, we just painted it.
Well, we retrofitted it and then we, we fixed it.
The retaining wall was here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
To this point.
Yeah.
But this section, if I got this correct.
Correct, no, correct.
This, between the walkway and the driveway, that portion of the retaining walls.
We didn't have a re-rector.
I mean, I, I'm a little concerned about it because I was there today and I, I drove around the block both ways and it, it does interfere with sight on that corner. And to me, that's a little more dangerous if kids are playing in the street and whatnot rather than a kid climbing on the wall and jumping off. It's, this is, I mean, this, I see this a lot with, not only just with fence, but bushes and, you know, people have them, you know, there's, I thought it was three feet was the limit on the, on the corner, triangle, I thought it was three feet.
On a corner, you can have up to thirty inches of two and a half feet where it's kind of solid, whether it's a fence or hedge or wall. And then you have, you can install a fence along the property line that has that openness of seventy-five percent of wall.
But, I mean, you, you can't see coming either way, you can't, can't see.
Yeah, well, that, that's why we're talking about cutting the corner.
How far back are you gonna put it?
I was thinking twenty feet each way.
Twen- twenty feet?
Like each section is eight feet, let's say, fence. So I'm saying.
From where it is now?
I, I went on the corner.
How far back are you gonna go with it?
When I did that, I, I went off from the corner, right where the hydrant is.
Right.
I'm saying back.
So sixteen and sixteen?
Well, I, I was saying.
If it's eight foot section?
Yeah, that would probably be easier, six to.
Okay, all right.
That probably makes more sense.
Mr. Klessi, if, if you're, site plans to scale, could you just tell us what the approximate distance is from the curb to the retaining wall on either corner?
From the curb?
Yeah.
It's eight feet.
Eight feet, okay, thank you.
And it's eight feet.
Approximately eight feet in both directions.
It's eight feet on the horizontal side of Van Dyke and it's seven feet when I go up the sheet, the longer side.
Perfect, thank you so much. Any other questions for this witness from the board? Seeing none. Questions from the audience for this witness? Yep, seeing none. Okay. In that case, would you like to say anything in conclusion before we go into an executive session?
I guess what we're saying is that we're obviously, again, we didn't realize the compliance issue and we're willing to modify the design to support, obviously, the neighborhood, support of the neighborhood as well as the visibility.
Great.
Just a question for point of clarity. I heard twenty feet, fifteen feet, and then sixteen feet?
Yeah, I think we settled at sixteen.
I think the slats are eight feet in each, so if you, if you did it within eight feet, you wouldn't have to customize the fence, you could just slide it out.
Yeah, sixteen then.
Sixteen takes me, actually where I drew it is exactly sixteen.
Thanks.
Okay, great. And now, this is the point where the audience can make general comments. Yes, please. Please state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Sure, my name's Jesse Gala, last name Gala, G.A.L.A., and I live at sixteen Van Dyke Place. Oh.
Swear affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Bear with me, I, I wrote down my thoughts and it's all encompassed here. First off, you've done a wonderful job of the house.
Thank you.
House is great. But let me, let me go through this quickly. The new fence creates a blind corner. Ouncoming cars are not visible till you start to enter the turn, giving little time to avoid a head-on collision pedestrians in the road or cars parked directly on or around the corner. I don't have the right to say where people do in their front yards, it's not my business. I don't care where people park in, on my street. You can park wherever you want, but to combine the two, what happens is you have a three-lane or a three-car lot wide road and it gets down to a blind pinch point of only one car wide that people cannot see as they approach it, anyway. The fence that, the fence and the wall that it sits on top of at the corner have a combined height of about six feet tall. I know this because I am six feet tall. And when I stand next to it, it's, at least the main post is taller than me. So at about fifty percent open, when you are driving next to it, the, the fence that's next to you and the fence around the corner, as you're moving, they kind of cancel each other out, kind of like a polarized lens. So even if you're looking around the corner, you can't see it while doing anything above five miles an hour, it might as well be solid. And, okay, this creates problems. Kids play on the section of street, I agree with you, there are always little kids there. And that means if somebody's shooting down the street and they cut that corner, they'll have seconds to miss the kid or hit a parked car. In the twenty years I have lived there, I have noticed when people reach this corner, they actually cut to the inside. Say if you're driving down the hill, people tend to favor the inside of the corner to get around faster. So they're actually crossing into the opposing lane. And if you can't see until you enter the corner, that makes it worse. That's nothing to do with you, that's just human nature. All right? Let's see, when, let's see, with just two to three foot tall wall, you could see what was coming now, you can't. At night, it's worse. I mean, during the daytime, you can kind of see what's going on, but when it's dark, you can't. And again, this is only the front of the house. This is only as you clear the front facade of the house and are about to go around the corner to the right, or as you're coming down and clear the side of the house. So we're just talking about where your maple tree is, basically. And I agree, the kids should be kept from jumping off of that, but it's maybe a little too high. So, I don't want to just throw shade, you know, and curse the darkness, I'd rather offer you some light, all right? The previous fence, I'm not saying it was good luck, but it's a post and wire or post and cable fence, right? That's more than eighty percent open. It's every six feet, there's a post and there's cable, horizontal cable going across. That could keep a little kid from going through, I don't know. If not that, no one, even, when, when two cars come to the intersection, they both think they have right of way and they don't think they should stop. Now, if you've got three car lengths wide, it's not a problem, we make it around. But when there's only one car wide, I've already done it a few times where we're both kind of playing chicken on the opening. Let's see, if we added stop signs at the, at that corner, it's a really quiet street. It seems dumb, but stop signs would at least make people slow down as they reached it, look around and see the other guy. The other thing you could do is you could paint double yellows through the curve on the street, that's done here in town in a couple of spots, that'll make people stay in lane a little better. Also, as is mentioned and is shown on that picture, there's a fire hydrant on the corner and people will literally, now, you should have the right to park in front of your house and that's all they want to do with this, but I've come around that corner at night and because of the fence, I don't even see a full SUV parked in front of the house until I'm about to hit it and then have to adjust, right? Sorry. So, let's see, if, since there's a hydrant there, maybe you could paint the curbs yellow. I don't know what the ordinance is for how far away you have to park from a fire hydrant, but I bet it ain't a foot and I bet it ain't three. And if we had a car length on either side that was yellowed out, people wouldn't park right there and it might get better. So, you've done a lovely job with the house, I'm only worried about somebody having to choose between hitting an oncoming car, a kid, or a parked car. And it's the geometry of the intersection. I just wanted to say my piece, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Can I ask that?
Sure, sir.
Sir, I have a question.
Yes, I'm sorry.
What do you think of their proposal to cut the corner fence? Do you think that would solve?
That's a start, I mean, I don't know which posts you're planning, if, if it was all the way up to where the entrance is, the walkway, maybe? Because again, it's the two acting in concert at the corner going like this, right? As you're, as you're in motion. I don't know how much would have to be removed. But I'm assuming that somebody smarter than me who's done this a couple of times could drive around the corner and go, yeah, I'm looking to be starting right, I mean, I have video, I shot it the other day of what it looks like coming around the corner. I'm assuming a car length is about twenty feet, eighteen feet?
Eighteen is a parking spot.
There you go. So at least one of those, if not, on, on the, it's weird, Van Dyke Place is an L.
Yes.
So on the short face of the L, if you, if, you might need to remove more because as you're coming up that and you're trying to see by the house, it's not, you might start looking at sixty degrees rather than forty-five, but I don't know, at least, and, and like I say, the, the hydrant's right on the corner. If there was no parking there for at least a car length, then you wouldn't also have a vehicle that's driving you out and making you not see the corner. I don't know. I would say a car length, if not a car length and a half, if you want to be safe about it. I do know historically, again, people used this street as a cut-through years ago, decade ago, a car actually on a Saturday night thought that they could cut around and they didn't see the street turned, so they plowed right into the house at the bottom of the street. They literally were going so fast, they couldn't stop before they hit the, before they hit the house. So, again, the painted little yellow lines might have indicated that or a stop sign might have stopped that. Look, it's tiny, small, relatively unused street, I get this, but we might be able to fix it with paint. That's it.
Okay, thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Just a little more quick, has the neighborhood ever approached the police department about the traffic issue or safety issues on that corner?
I don't know, but I bet they were approached a couple of times when there have been accidents there.
Yeah, for sure, because if you're familiar with Franklin Place, where it turns left onto the whole bar. We're, they're, they're dealing with kind of the same thing.
Yeah, and, so, again, I don't want to make enemies out of my neighbors, but it's a short, it's a, it's a capital letter L, right? And really, you can go off to the side, so it's almost a T, and there happens to be a house at the base of the street. And the people who live there like to park their car in front, which already gets you down to like maybe two. And then if somebody parks around the corner on your, next to your property, not your fault, that gets it down to one and you can't see. So, I don't know, I'm just trying to help, I'm not trying to cost you money and I'm sorry about that.
Thank you, sir. Nope, I think we're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, we're going to go into executive session. Zach, can you please tell us how many votes we need for the C variance?
We're just gonna need a simple majority.
Okay, great, thank you. With that, I will open it up. Who would like to begin? Mr. Chinchelli, please.
I, I think the proposal would work, but we kind of gotta know how much they're gonna cut back. And we just can't say, you don't, don't want them to start and do something and it doesn't work out.
Sounded like they said sixteen in each direction.
Yeah, but I don't know, I don't know what that number should be, but it, I mean, it is, you, you can't see coming around that corner.
Mm-hmm.
Because I, I drove both ways today and you, you can't see coming around the corner.
Okay.
So.
Sure, but please.
Car is about sixteen foot six wide. The driver sits maybe about eight foot.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with that, I, I think that'll work, but I just think.
If we're at sixteen feet, I think we have a pretty good triangle to see through, that's all I'm saying then.
Okay.
And we're sitting in the car, we're up at about four, four and a half feet, the ride line, so you can see over everything.
Thank you, Mr. Klessi. Ms. Chief.
I, so the issue here is the type of fence, it's not, it's not where the fence is, right? I mean, the fence is okay where it is on the property line, correct?
Well, not necessarily, it's, it can be where it is if it's thirty inches or if it's seventy-five percent open. So it's partially an issue of placement, given the style of fence. They could have that style of fence if it was five feet in from the property line, which is not.
But if they had a fence that had seventy-five percent, it could be in the spot where it is now. So it could have had a.
Different style of fence, right? That was, the idea being that it's a little more open and, you know, visible, I guess, or glass or greater visible, but.
Okay. Thank you. I know, I just think that, I mean, there was a better fence option, whether or not you knew the, the ordinance or not, I think just obviously you see that, you know, it's, this is, this is gonna be effect, traffic, and I just think that, you know, it was a poor choice of fence, so I can't, I can't support this.
That's, that's fine, so we have an option, right, as a board? We can either say, we approve this if the, the style of fence changes in order to meet the ordinance, or we can approve their change, right? Which cuts back, according to them, sixteen feet in both directions. So, it's up to you guys, if you feel strongly enough to.
I, I, I think, e- even the fence style, if it was cut back far enough, I, I think that would work.
Okay.
You wouldn't necessarily have to change the style of the fence, but it has to be, you know, it has to open that corner up so you can visually see.
Which is what they're proposing.
Right.
That defeats one of the other objectives of this and now you've got a triangular play area that still has three-foot drop that kids will certainly play in just because it's there.
Yes.
So I think a better style of fence is the way to go, in my opinion.
Okay.
Tom?
Yeah, this is, this is kind of tough, this, I have a history there, but I think there's a combination of ways we can get things done. Maybe they're cutting back the fence, maybe meeting with the police department and seeing if there's a way for them to come up with some traffic solutions down there that will, I mean, unfortunately, that property's been there forever, it's always, you know, I remember when Glen Side didn't have that island there and people used to cut down the street all the time both ways, not just one way now. So there's a, I think there's a couple of solutions here. I have a concern that for the tent, for the owners, lawn maintenance, now the guy's gotta lift, you know, either they put a gate, which kind of defeats the purpose of a, of a fence, or you lift the lawnmower up three feet to cut the grass, where you put rocks or whatever it might be, I don't, you know.
It's like, it's a growing area.
Okay, so there's all kinds of things going on.
Yeah.
I'm, I know this is gonna sound really bad, had you consulted. I'm, I'm, I know this is gonna sound really bad. Had you consulted before this, probably would have been a soft, soft policy solution, yeah.
I think we have to settle on direction.
Um, I'm kind of torn. I mean, I, I kind of want them to have the fence. I'm happy with the 16 foot setback on each side. You know, with, with the two, two sections being removed. Uh, but I think that just needs to be approved by, whoever approves the site triangle.
What if they changed the style of fence to be conforming, which would take the, the, the site visibility issue?
Yeah, that would be good too. Then, then, here's my concern with the wider opening fence. Now you can have kids, you know, when we build a staircase, it's only supposed to be so wide so kids' heads don't fit through.
Right.
Now we're encouraging a wider open fence so kids can crawl through it, or however the case may be. That's, am I, am I overthinking it too much?
A little bit.
I, yes, Marie, please.
Why not?
Sorry. Um, when I'm looking at the street view, and I'm, I'm just trying to, you know, Tom and I were both trying to eyeball where that would be pulled back to, right? Like, let's pull it back 16 feet on, on both approaches. Um, the problem is, is that when you take and connect those, those two corners,
It goes right through the tree. Yeah.
And the tree, and the tree is a lot like, you know, just, you know, one of those maple trees that sticks up. It's, it's got branches that come out from the bottom. So, um, even if it's skirted around the tree, um, the height of the fence is gonna hit those branches that are coming in. I, um, just not convinced that that's gonna work. They might have to, they might have to go in, jog it around and.
We've had, we've had the tree trimmed a bit.
Yeah.
And we've taken it up a bit in the canopy. So.
Because we were concerned about that very visibility issue.
It was cutting the visibility.
It was too low. So I had them.
Yeah, we cut, we cut, we raised it up so you can see, um, through it, cause it was, it was overhanging on the sidewalk.
I'm talking about like the, the trunks that are down the bottom. Like they, they're significant.
I, I think we're at the point now where, um, the board's going to consider replacing the fence. I, I don't hear enough support for the cutback and the practicality of it and the safety issues that still persist, right? If we have a three foot retaining wall that doesn't have a fence adjacent or on top of it. So at that point, um, I, I believe that's your best path forward.
One more comment. Could they replace a section of the fence around that corner?
I, I don't know that we want to.
Okay.
Blend fences at this.
All right.
Um, so it's up to you. If you want us to vote on your proposal, as is, where you take two sections out on each side at 16 feet each, we'll certainly do that. But I think I know how that's gonna go. So we're giving you a second alternative to replace the fence, to make it conforming, um, and then just increase the visibility through a more open fence. But in obviously a decorative style of your choosing, but that's, that's, I would think.
Lower the fence to 75%.
Yes.
Or greater.
Or greater.
And lower it to two foot six high. Is that what you're saying?
No, 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 just visibility.
It has to be six feet, right?
Total.
Total? Is that right, Tom?
In the front yard, well, right now, that's what it measures. The ordinance isn't perfectly clear about such situations. It really talks about the fence height being four feet, but, but also considers the combination of heights. I, I think regardless, you're probably ending up with some type of barriers, but the key is solving any perceived public safety issue. I mean, that is the key, right? I, I just wonder if maybe there's a, a third option, which would be potentially taking away, basically having the fence come back to the corner of the house, if that makes sense. So you wouldn't solve the problem of people falling off the wall, but as far as I understand it, fall protection's not required for a wall that high. You would kind of open it up there. And, and there's no perfect solution, just right? So I'm just, as far as options go.
I was gonna say, is a four foot compliant fence in existing location, like acceptable? Like, is that, or are we saying they need to have it lower than a four foot fence?
No, I, I think that's acceptable as long as they increase the visibility due to the concerns of the public about the ability of traffic or, or passengers in car or drivers being able to see through the fence, right?
I can support that.
Problem is the, the wall is already 30, almost three feet high.
Yes. And that's not gonna change.
Yeah, that's funny, yeah.
Please.
If I understand, this is what you suggested. It's to find this corner and come straight to the right and remove this section of fence entirely.
Is that what you're saying?
I think that's what you're saying.
Is that what you're saying?
From the corner.
I, I mean, that was me talking out loud. I, you may not find that. Thinking out loud, really.
Well, I, I think, I just think it maybe would solve.
Well, that would solve the problem of the site triangle.
Because that would bring the, that's about 20 feet back off the face of it.
Mm-hmm.
And then we, we could get the containment of the fence back into that yard.
Okay. Is, is the board willing to vote on that solution? Yeah?
So what's the height then along the side? Is that, so the fact that the wall gets smaller?
I'm just gonna guess that this wall at this point is probably just under two feet. And the fence is four feet, so.
Sort of speed six.
Okay.
It's, it's going from like two foot six to zero.
And it's just on the side of the house?
Yep.
Not the front.
No, I, I think that's, that's something that we can consider. And with that, Nicole, can I get a, we'll call?
I need a motion in a second.
Oh, can I get a motion in a second?
Uh, I think a motion, we vote on this application with the changes as presented.
Perfect. Can I get a second?
Second.
Right, great.
Mr. Kirin?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Chiefo?
Yes.
Mr. Chanhui?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Lucas?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Just for the purposes of the, of the resolution, just acknowledge that it's fence on top of wall, just so everyone can.
Okay.
Thanks.
Yes. Zach's got us covered.
He's got it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
And if you could just, for the purpose of clarity for the resolution, you said cut the corner. How so?
Ten?
No, you, this is your suggestion.
I'm cutting. Basically, we'd need permit to do it.
We need, yeah, we need his exhibits.
Perfect, thank you very much.
Oh, right. Well, actually. Well, 20 feet from here.
From here.
It's a good solution. I was afraid we were gonna kick them out.
Thank you, Nicole. Next, we have 11 Plain Street.
Good evening.
We're gonna swear you in.
Perfect. Just take your first name and S name, please.
Karthik Jaran.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Please proceed.
Okay, good evening. Um, so my name is Karthik. I'm the applicant for, uh, 11 Plain Street. Uh, the application we have in front of the board is, uh, for a, variances for side yard setback and combined side yard setback. This is to support a, a second story addition we plan to, uh, do on the property. So currently the house is a, a Cape Cod style house. Um, we believe we are the third or fourth owners of this house that was built in the 50s. Uh, when we bought it, it was a Cape Cod, but there was a kitchen at the back of, um, the house that the previous owners had added. Um, we wanted to, um, add a full second story because right now there is a, uh, two bedrooms and a single bathroom on each levels, which makes it a little bit of a less, um, easy layout for us. Uh, we have young children, um, so it's kind of like a, a fight with the children with other bedrooms and so on. So, what we are proposing is a, um, a second story addition, like I said, which will have all of the, uh, bedrooms on the second floor as well as, um, two bathrooms. Um, the, and we wanted to build something that is flush with the existing, um, property. So on the right side, um, there is the requirement for the side yard setback because we have an existing, um, property that is five feet from the property line. Uh, we are also proposing to, um, uh, do some improvements as part of that, which is also to, um, remove a, a deck that is in a, currently a non-conforming, um, condition, uh, as well as, um, add a front porch to the, to the building. Happy to take any questions from the board. Um, if not, we have a witness.
We'll check in with our board experts first, see if they have any questions for this witness.
Yes.
I'll reserve my questions.
Great. Thank you. Board have any questions for this witness?
Yes, uh, I recall we had, um, a resolution in the year 2022. Um, why, why weren't these, uh, points included in that, uh, application at that time?
Um, so this, um, the same, a similar application was submitted in front of the board in 2022 for the side yard and combined side yard setbacks. Uh, it was approved, but, uh, we were not able to initiate the project in due time. And, uh, not knowing like, you know, when we would be able to start the project, we didn't want to come back to the board for extension. So we wanted to do this when we were in a position to actually, uh, initiate the project.
Thank you. Uh, with that, I'll see if there's any questions. Questions only from the audience for this witness. Seeing none, please introduce your expert.
Right, sir. Um, Alex Rodriguez, he's our architect for the project.
Hello, Sarah, we're gonna swear you in.
May I just write and state your name, please?
Alexander Rodriguez.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you. If you could just give a brief, uh, statement of your qualifications.
Sure. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey. Been licensed since 2005. Um, I've appeared before this board, uh, back in 2002 with the original application. And most recently I've appeared for, uh, Long Hill and Borough of Burner Town.
Does the board accept this?
We will. Welcome.
And thank you.
Thank you.
So just step over here where the drawings, this is on?
Yes.
Okay, wonderful. Um, just kind of, pretty much just kind of go through the variances and just indicate some of the projects, some of the things that we're looking to do. Um, you know, first thing that, uh, the main, uh, variances that we're looking to get are, this is a side yard setback on the right side of the property, which we are continuing that existing non-conforming that's there now. And we're just adding the second floor up along that exterior wall. Uh, that existing, uh, setback is five feet and we're just gonna continue that existing non-conforming. Um, and then that, um, in turn also, uh, plays in with the side yard combined. Um, whereas, uh, 33% is required and we, um, are gonna be at 31, um, point. I think, I had 31.8, but I thought I saw 31.6. Uh, 31.6 is the percentage that we're looking for, for the side yard combined. Um, there is a hardship in regards to the zone. Uh, this is in an R6 zone. Uh, for the R6 zone, as far as the lot width is concerned, um, they require a 60-foot, uh, lot width, we're at 50. So that, um, comes into as far as the hardship, we're 10 feet short of what's required. Um, obviously, it's an existing, uh, Cape Cod house that's there. Um, and on one side, the property is 10.9, again, going back to the five-foot side yard setback, which we're just continuing uh, to go up. We are conforming, uh, with the building coverage, uh, lot coverage and also the floor area percentages. So those aren't, um, any issues that come up with, uh, the properties. Um, just quickly running through the floor plans. We are adding a Bilco door entrance, just as far as easy access to be able to bring things down into the basement. There will be a drainage at the bottom of that Bilco entrance. Um, they are looking to finish some of that basement, uh, for future use on the first floor. Um, we are, we are changing some of the, the entrances. Um, as far as there is an existing deck, which we are removing, we're making a new, um, exterior, um, entrance um, from the back of the property with a smaller deck leading down to a code conforming property. And then the other things that we're looking to do is we're looking to add a front porch just to be able to enjoy uh, the streetscape and trying to enhance the front facade, um, as well, as far as the first floor is concerned. Um, on the second floor, as Karthik had mentioned, uh, we are looking to have three bedrooms and two bathrooms. Um, just to make that second floor without the sloping ceilings and be able to have the eight-foot ceilings throughout, throughout that whole second floor, which as you know, a Cape Cod house has those sloping ceilings and you really can't get furniture up into those eve spaces. The front facade, we are, uh, again, looking to have that front porch go from side to side. That front porch, um, will also need that side yard setback variance in regards to that. But again, that's just kind of in line with everything else. And again, we are looking to go up, um, on that property line. Um, this is that right side, uh, that we're proposing to do. We are adding some windows along that side. This is an existing window. We are replacing the dining room window and we are adding a window up above the closet area and some, um, egress windows for the bedrooms on the side. And then on the rear elevation, we are creating a gable popping up over the kitchen area to create the master suite with some vaulted ceilings. Um, again, a gabled area, um, with, with, uh, you know, some triple windows, um, a slider and a deck coming out towards the back. And then on the side, we are creating some windows for the bedroom and a side entrance as well. Um, we do believe that this is, um, you know, conforming with the neighborhood. The house to the left, um, at one point, I believe, was, um, was it gave, were, were those torn down at all or those?
Yeah, I think the houses on both sides were torn.
So, uh, the houses on either side to the left and to the right were torn down. Um, I believe there were capes and now they're two-story structures. So we're just trying to stay within, with the rest of the neighborhood.
Great, thank you. Board experts, questions for the.
Just a couple of quick ones. Uh, you're pretty thorough in your, your overview. Um, just as a technical matter, I believe you need a variance for not having a garage. Just as a technical matter, just the board's identification. You answered my question about basement access. Any proposed floor more management improvements?
Uh, no, not at this time. Nope. Yep, it's not necessary.
All right, great.
Um, how about the drainage? Are you changing any of the downspout locations? And where they're directed to?
Um, as far as the, the downspouts, um, so I'm not exactly sure where the, the existing drain leaders are, the downspouts are, but my thought would be is that they would just stay in the existing locations.
And you, you don't anticipate directing them towards a neighbor's property at all?
No.
And again, because they're, they're not adding more than 300 square feet of additional previous coverage, they're not required to add any stormwater mitigation. Do you have any, um, proposed lighting that you're adding to the back of the house? Maybe that's higher than, what was there before?
Uh, we would probably add some sconces on either side of the, that exterior, um, the exterior, uh, rear entrance. Um, but other than that, that's, we're not gonna add any high, high, um, floodlights up above 16 feet.
Thank you, Marie. Board, questions for this witness?
How, how deep is the front porch?
Eighty. Uh, I believe if you go to page three, uh, there's a dimension on the left side of the first floor and it indicates 80 for that, uh, front porch to come out. and it indicates eighteen for that front porch to come out.
So does that, that's, brings you closer to the street than the average of the houses around you?
I, I can explain that provision, right? So it, in such cases where you remove, say, most of the house and technically more than 50% of the front wall, you're supposed to then, basically reconstructing the house at that point. You're supposed to bring it in, in line with the, the neighboring houses. So you, in that situation, you would consider the setbacks of adjacent properties, three to the right, three to the left. In this case, based on the demo plan, they're keeping the front wall. So it's not a factor as far as the front, the average front yard setback. And it seems like the front porch complies with the minimum front yard setback of 25 feet. So if they were not, if they were taking that front wall down, then they would have to consider or do calculations for the neighborhood, the front yard setback categories. Is your testimony, well, not your testimony, but do you agree that keeping the first floor?
Were any, any conversations with neighbors, specifically the one on your right, about just having windows on the side on the second floor and any concerns?
Yeah, so I did discuss the plans with my neighbor who is closest to that side of the house. And one of the things we have done in the design is like right above the kitchen is where our master suite's going to be. One thing we've done is we've not added windows on that side of the wall, just so because it's not going to be looking into like their private quarters. So they were appreciative of the fact that we did that as part of the design.
Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions for this witness from the public? Seeing none? Do you have anything to say in conclusion?
No, I think I just wanted to round it up by saying thanks for your time. You know, this application, we've certainly taken into consideration that, you know, we do things that are, you know, kind of aligns with what the neighborhood aesthetics is. We've stuck to a very classical design for the house. You know, we've taken into consideration like the impact that it could have on the neighbors, like especially not adding any windows to the, the master bedroom that might look into them. So we also don't see any public detriment from it. We are making, you know, a lot of improvements that will be aligned with the neighborhood.
Great, thank you very much. Now that the testimony is closed, are there any comments from the public? Seeing none, I think we can go into executive session. Zach, can you read us the variances and the votes required?
Sure. Oh, we're going to need side yard variances, both regular and combined, and a variance for the fact that there is no garage and or other accessory building to be used as a garage. The only conditions we have are compliance with the board engineer's memo of the standard.
Great. With that, I'll open it up. Who would like to begin?
Mr. Curran. So I think it's a thoughtful addition. And then considering, you know, the existing hardship, right, 50, 50-foot lot width versus a 60 for the R6 zone and pre-existing non-conformity on the side yard. You know, I can support this.
Yeah, I can support it too. Certainly the houses on either side of him are considerably larger and that street has a pretty good mix of all kinds of stuff. So I, and I, I think the plan is really good, so I can support it.
Yep, for the life of me, I can't figure out why they changed the zoning to R6 in that neighborhood. Really can't, but that's a different story. I can support this application. I too had to go through similar stuff when I did my house, so I can, I can kind of feel your pain. So I can support this application.
Great. I can also support this. I believe that you spoke well about the hardship and the positive criteria. And I agree with HBC and I believe Environmental, the Forester. Everyone was in agreement that this project works and they have no issues with it. So with that, can I get a motion to approve?
So moved, move this application forward.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, Alex. Can I get a rule call, please?
Mr. Curran?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Chiefo?
Yes.
Mr. Tanchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Leiketz?
Yes.
Congratulations, good luck. We are rolling right along here, folks.
No.
Can we get the team for 45 Franklin Place, please? Please begin.
Hi, my name is Amanda Wolf of Dempsey Dempsey and Shehan. And tonight I'm representing the owners of 45 Franklin Place, which is block 2613, lot two. I will note that in the review memorandum, it did say that this is a two-family dwelling. It is not, it is only a single-family dwelling. And the lot size is 6,999 square feet. It is in the R5 residential single and two-family zone. We do have four variances for you tonight, one for FAR. The proposed is 39.4%, whereas the required is 35%. We have a combined side yard setback, the proposed is 30.6%, whereas the required is 33%. We are actually reducing the lot coverage from a proposed 52.2% to, it's already at 55.4%. And then we also have building coverage, which is proposed at 25.3% and the required is 20%. And we would like to note that there are some non-conforming conditions with the fence, the shed, and the driveway. We are going to be relocating the shed and the fence and shortening the driveway, so it won't go right up to the property line. So with that, we will be eliminating the parking area in the rear yard that has a zero-foot setback, but we will have more than a five-foot setback. There's a pre-existing non-conforming fence location that it's on the adjacent property. We will correct that. Same with the shed, we will correct that. There's also a lack of a garage, that's a pre-existing condition. We're not sure, we don't think that the FAR triggers it, but we can discuss that at some point. And the driveway setback will remain, we are not touching the driveway. We are paving it, but we will remove it from the rear property line. Description of the project, this is a very well-screened piece of property. It's well-screened by landscaping. There's also a very large significant tree in the front that will actually end up screening the proposed porch. But the applicant is proposing to modify the existing rear paver patio, side pea gravel patio, side paver walkway, and side deck. The applicant is also proposing to relocate the existing HVAC condensers. The proposal results in a 112-square-foot increase in building coverage and a 225-square-foot reduction in lot coverage. The applicant is not proposing to modify any other portions of the property and the front facade of the dwelling will remain unchanged. The proposed porch will be open but screened, it will not have air conditioning or heating. Really, this is a place for the applicants and their children so that they have a place for recreation that's not subject to bugs and heat and weather. And the porch can be accessed from the existing front porch, from the stairs to the rear, or internally from the living room. The rear of the proposed porch connects to a proposed paver walk and a proposed outdoor kitchen area that features a gas grill, sink, and mounted television. We reviewed the comments from the board professionals and have no objections to any of the comments we received. And with that, I will let you know that we do have four witnesses tonight. We have the Williams family, we have Andrew Clark, who is our engineer, Dan Alaka, who is our architect, and Kate Keller, who is our planner. And with that, I would like to call Mr. and Mrs. Williams.
Thank you. We're going to swear you in. Just raise your hand. State your names for the record, please.
Rachel Weems.
Benjamin Weems.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
So if you could just tell us, how long have you lived in Summit?
We bought the house and moved here two years ago.
Perfect. And how you lived in this dwelling for the past two years?
Yes.
Gotcha. And do you have any involvement in the community?
Yeah, so we have two sons, three years, three years old and one years old. They're both in school here at the JCC. We try to make an effort to attend all the community events. The Easter egg hunt is our son's favorite.
Very active boys, I'm guessing?
Very active boys, so yes, generally mostly kid-based.
Okay, so then that's kind of one of the reasons that you're looking for this improvement?
Yes, absolutely.
Your children's, because I know you have a patio and a bath, but why is that not sufficient for them?
Yeah, so right now we have a very small grass area in the back because there's a large patio there and we'd really like to make that a larger grass area for running around, soccer, et cetera, and then have more of the place where we might eat dinner outside on the side, which is where that porch is.
So one of the questions I was going to ask you is, why put the porch in the front instead of the back? But I guess you could tell me that it's so that your kids have a little bit of running around space.
Exactly, we want that kind of continuous grassy area for them to run and play sports.
Awesome. Okay, and what is immediately adjacent to the proposed screen porch on lot four?
To pro screen porch, the neighbor has a garage that is not connected to their house. So it's a neighbor's garage and then there's a driveway and then their house is on the other side of the lot.
Gotcha. Okay, and you're also looking for a patio, correct? Why do you need both the porch and the patio?
Yeah, so the patio is specifically in the area where, where we would add that outdoor kitchen. So it's specifically just literally walking from the porch to the kitchen and then it pretty much allows us to cook and have direct flow to that outdoor dining area.
And I know one of the questions the board may want to know is, have you considered reducing the size of either of the improvements?
Yes, we did consider that. Our architect pointed out during the planning phase that the size that we have it right now has the columns from the front of the house all very evenly spaced. So we thought that was the most aesthetically pleasing. Also, from a utility perspective, having plenty of space for a dining area, you know, being able to actually host, host a dinner there would be really nice. So those were the two considerations.
And are you proposing any lighting outside at all?
I don't expect any additional lighting, just kind of recessed ceiling lights.
Okay. And with the patio in the back, you'll be converting it to grass?
Correct.
Okay. And then why are you paving the driveway?
Two reasons, one is it's really hard to maintain, there's constantly weeds coming up. It's currently like rocks and gravel. And the other is it's, I think it's more utilitarian for the kids to play, like for example, basketball or something. Right now, it's kind of, you have to put shoes on and you can't really play out there. Wanted to be more of a play area.
Understood. And just to confirm, you're okay with reducing the size of the driveway?
Yes, we're okay with that.
Okay, and same with the, with the fence in the shed? You're okay with moving it back onto your property?
Yes, correct.
Okay. And have you spoken to your neighbors about the project?
Yeah, so we went and knocked on the house of the neighbor directly next to the porch because they're the most affected. They had no concerns, they were very happy with the project. So that's good. I also briefly spoke to the neighbor in the back. I believe she's here today, so maybe we'll hear from her later. I'm not actually sure whether or not she has anything on her mind, so we'll find out.
Okay, and is this the house that you plan on growing old in?
Yes, that, that's the idea is we specifically bought this house and wanted to wait a couple of years, figure out, is this where we want to stay? And we're in love with it. I mean, you guys know the area, it's right next to downtown, it's super walkable, we love it. So the goal is to raise our kids here, send them to the school system, like really nest in this home.
Excellent. Anything that these improvements will help you enjoy the space much better?
Absolutely, I think the missing piece for us is like a really enjoyable outdoor area with no bugs, no paint out there. So this is, this is, I think, what we want to, to be able to be there through, you know, 20 years at least, through the kids graduating.
Excellent. That's all I have for you. If the board has any questions or members of the public?
Thank you, Ms. Wolf. Board experts, any questions or saving them for the expert witnesses?
I guess I'll just ask one question, it's kind of a choice for you guys. So hypothetically, if the board approves the application, would you agree to a condition that the screen porch remain a screen porch? Meaning in the future it couldn't be walled and be from one of the houses?
Yeah, we have no intention of having anything but a screen, so that's fine.
All right, great, thank you, Tom, appreciate that. Questions from the board for these witnesses? Seeing none. Questions, questions only from the public for these witnesses? Yes, please come up, state your name, spell your last name, and give us your address.
Hi, Nancy Amster Cool, 16 Ruthman Place. So my question was, I came to the Department of Community Service and read all the paperwork. And what I thought I had seen was that the paving of the driveway was going to come all the way back to the property line and it said they were proposing zero setback.
You're 100%, that's what the, it did say. We decided that we were going to reduce it, just in case the board had concerns about the coverage. We were preemptively deciding we would reduce that coverage.
So am I right in assuming then that you were abiding by the five-minute, five-foot setback from the actual property line, not where the fence is now? Because the fence is already on my property and it runs almost 70 feet on my property, over a foot.
Yes, and we will be removing that fence onto our property, so it's no longer on your property.
And, and Ms. Wolf, you're going to have Mr. Clark testify to cite improvements?
Yes, of course.
Okay, great, so there's going to be an expert witness who's going to speak to this in detail?
Okay, that's perfect, thank you.
Great, thank you so much. All right, Ms. Wolf, next witness?
I would call Andrew Clark.
What timing, that's perfect.
Right. And Mr. Clark, you'll have to raise your hand, thank you.
Can you state your name, please?
Andrew Clark.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
And could you please give a brief description of your credentials?
Sure, I'm a licensed professional engineer and land surveyor in the state of New Jersey for quite a long time. My license is in good standing. I've appeared before this board many times, almost monthly. And I've appeared before Chatham Borough, Chatham Township, Madison, with some frequency zoning and planning.
Thank you. Will the board accept this witness? Absolutely, welcome back, Mr. Clark.
With that, I'll let you describe the existing and proposed conditions.
Sure, I seem to have misplaced my eagle, so.
No worries.
I'm going to wing it this time.
Okay.
The property's been fairly described, but I'll do in a little more detail. It's located in the R5 zone. It's on Franklin Place and not far, about 70 feet and a little bit farther in the other direction from the side, side streets. Existing on the site is a two-and-a-half-story dwelling with a front porch. And on the left side of the house, the west or left side of the house, there's like a pea gravel patio that's there with some connecting walks to the larger patio that's in the rear of the house. Stone driveway in the back, as was described, reaching a little bit beyond the boundaries, as is the shed that's in the back-left corner and the fence that's running along that rear line. In terms of drainage patterns and topography, there isn't much. It's very flat, to the point where if you look at the survey, most of the topography such as it is is spot grates. Because there's really not even like a foot, foot and a half of gray change across the entire property. So there, there really isn't much discussed in that sense. The existing stormwater, such as it is, is, is from the roof leaders. They're generally just discharged at grade, very close to the house and the planting beds and proximate to the dwelling. So there's nothing discharging at the neighboring properties. I think it's helpful to understand what's around us as well. On the, on the left side, the west side of the property, as was described, there's a detached garage that the neighbor has with the driveway that accesses Franklin and then their house fronts on the, on the side street. Right above that, on just north of that on lot four, I have it labeled as adjacent stone parking area. The entire area sort of between the detached garages and all the way up to our fence is like a gravel parking area. I presume that it's a multifamily house that's, that's there, fronts on the side street. And then behind us is a single-family, I believe it's a single-family residential. The neighbor was just here speaking, I believe that's her property, that extends all the way along behind us and fronts on Ruthden, another side street. And then on the corner is, yeah, it may be a nonprofit, all classified as a commercial property. So it's, it's a business use that's in there rather than a residential use. And then behind it and sort of along our side of the property is all paved and there's a parking area in the back, about six to eight cars fit back there. So that sort of puts the context together. And I do have the board, but I'll just stand it up on the table here for the proposed conditions. So now making reference to my variance plan dated October 28, 2024, and last revised January 30, 2025. And so what was described, what we're doing in the back, that we're putting a porch, the screen porch is shaded and shown on the left side. There's a piece of a deck that's behind the existing porch to be removed in order to constitute the, the screen porch. The outdoor spaces that exist are the pea gravel area that's in the vicinity of where that porch is going to go. So that'll be removed completely. And then there's the connecting walk that'll be partially removed. The patio in the back is being substantially reduced so that it's basically more of a sidewalk than a patio at the back coming off the deck there and then giving you access to the area. And then the proposed patio is going to be tucked within the, the corner of the house and the porch that'll be constructed. So. So what this does is sort of pull in all those outdoor spaces much closer to the house and farther from the neighbors, which I think is a valuable and important aspect to this. And in doing so, creates that grassed area that the Weems are seeking in the backyard, where that existing patio that's there now will be removed and turned into more of a lawn. The important aspect that we discussed a moment ago, and just to highlight, the fence that's encroaching on the north line is going to be relocated so that it's on our property. It varies between a foot and about 1.2 feet, or say 14 inches, in the back left. So that's going to come onto our property. The shed will be relocated to a conforming location, which means it'll be at least four feet off of both the rear and the sideline. That's the minimum requirement for an accessory structure. So the shed's coming onto our property in conforming location. And as mentioned in one of the review memos, there's a five-foot setback required to any parking areas. So we're going to pull from the fence line now where the stone is, we're going to pave the driveway and set the edge of pavement at least five feet in from the boundary line. So that's also changes slightly the lot coverage numbers from what's on my presented drawing. We have those numbers as, for the lot coverage, is 3,753 square feet, which is 53.6. That reduces down to 53, or 52.2%, which is 3,654 square feet. So it takes about 99 square feet, not quite 100 square feet when we pull that in five feet. If it's a little more than five, will be a little more than 99 square feet that we reduce. So in reducing the lot coverage, we're actually, that in itself is a slight improvement with regards to the stormwater. But aside from that, one of the questions was, what's happening with the roof leaders on the porch? I think the best thing to do with those is to just connect the roof leaders to the existing roof leader system that discharges at grade. And probably part of it will go to the back where they discharge, and part to the front. You could run it out to the street, but there's not much pitch there. And once you dig down, you're almost below the pavement. And also, we have, as indicated in John Linson's review memo, there's a very large, very nice tree in the front and the back. And I don't think it's really probably going to be helpful to excavate out for the roof leaders. So we're probably better off just letting them do what they're due and go to the planting beds that are around the house right now. That covers the proposed conditions. I can field questions or jump into the memos for a moment if we need to?
I think we can start with questions from our board experts.
Sure.
I don't think I have much for engineering. I think I've just specified that the condition they're proposing to promote to the driveway is that it's five feet from the rear lot line. Because, you know, if you read that, it's from lot line, that could be viewed as being from the side lot line.
Side, side, just correct.
It's from the rear only.
Correct, that's correct. Because if it was five feet off the side... Yeah, there's non-conforming condition on the side, and we were going to maintain that same position on the sideline, but in the rear, you know, basically in parking, there's the encroachment, but also just to respect, you know, the intent of the ordinance coming five feet from the rear lot line.
Great, duly noted, thank you. Maureen, what do you, oh, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, I don't, I think you covered everything that I was going to ask. Let me just clarify, you're further reducing the previous coverage on the property beyond what was in the application?
Correct, an additional 99 square feet.
Okay, so you're, you're reducing it by 225 square feet?
Right.
Something like that?
Right.
Okay, all right, so again, as, since that's less than 300 square feet of additional previous coverage, we're not required to put any stormwater mitigation on. So, and you already talked about the roof leaders and, you know, not bringing them up to the street, which I think is better, just to keep it on your property. But I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, I mean, I think that the comment from Mr. Linson is certainly well-taken and duly noted in terms of the care to be taken in the construction of the porch and using solid tubes and constructing in a way that's least impactful to those trees.
Great. Questions from the board for this witness? Seeing none. Okay, great. Questions from the public for this witness? Please. Yep, back up.
Just wanted to confirm that you were then abiding by the planting of the shrubbery in that buffer zone?
Yes, in accordance with the comments that were made, yes.
Thank you so much. All right, great. Ms. Wolf, if you want to call your next witness, please.
Yeah, so Mr. Alaka is my next witness. And he'll give you the pretty pictures.
Fantastic. We're going to swear you in, sir.
Is that your name?
Daniel Alaka.
And you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give?
I do.
And give you a brief qualification of your records?
Sure. Thank you. So I earned my Bachelor of Architecture degree from MENTI in 2014. I gained experience working at several local architecture firms before becoming a licensed New Jersey architect in 2021. Since then, I've operated my own practice in East Hanover with a focus on residential and small-scale commercial design.
Can you name a couple of boards that you've testified in front of recently?
This is actually my first.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Your license is in good standing?
It is in good standing.
All right, great. We will accept you as a expert witness, so please proceed.
Thank you.
And with that, could you describe this proposal for us?
Sure. So 45 Franklin Place was constructed around 1884, and it's located in Franklin Place Historic District. The two-and-a-half-story, single-family dwelling embodies some of the vernacular Victorian style, blending traditional Queen Anne features with a more restrained use of ornamentation. Its asymmetrical front facade is highlighted by a cantilevered tower extending from the second floor, and it features a covered wraparound porch with evenly spaced columns and simplified ornate detailing, all of which contribute to its unique character. As for the scope of work, we are proposing to remove 150 square feet of the existing covered porch attached along the west side of the residence. As part of this project, we are hoping to enlarge the existing porch area 132 square feet, bringing the new total screen and porch area to 282 square feet. The, the existing porch structure along the west facade is showing signs of deterioration, including an area of weakened deck framing. Reconstructing this section will address the structural issues and help bring the existing covered porch into compliance with current building codes, improving both its safety and functionality. As for the design intent and historical considerations, the proposed covered porch has been designed to mimic the existing structure by maintaining the architectural style proportions and existing roof line and details of the original home. Likewise, the screen-in section aligns with the front facade, creating a smooth transition of depth, making the added porch area feel like part of the original design. One key point I'd like to address is the reason for the 1.65-foot encroachment into the side setback. And this was a deliberate design choice to preserve the original spacing and rhythm of the porch columns as seen from the front elevation. The existing porch has evenly spaced columns that create a balanced look. Shifting the porch back to meet the setback shrinks the last column bay, as you can see in the front elevation of A2.1. And that, that will disrupt, disrupt the rhythm, in my opinion. Since the wraparound porch is one of the home's most defining features, maintaining consistent column spacing helps create a smooth transition between the existing proposed structure while preserving the architectural character and overall appearance of this, of this streetscape.
So in your opinion, would it be a better planning alternative to have the expanded porch?
I believe so. I think, you know, if we were to pull the, the edge of that, that last column two feet in, I, I think it really could throw off how it's going to look from the front, which is the most important elevation in terms of definitely, you know, for the historical preservation as well. Additionally, similar screen-in wraparound porches can be seen on nearby historic homes, especially one block north on Fernwood Road, supporting the design's appropriateness within the existing fabric of the historical district. As for the materials and construction details, the framing, we're going to be using all pressure-treated 2x8 joists, triple 2x8 girders, Simpson galvanized connectors. The foundation, we'll be using 14-inch diameter tube footings.
Are those the footings that were recommended to avoid the servants?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
And for the decking, we're going to be kind of just matching everything. We're going to be using composite boards to match the front porch area. The trim work, we're deciding either paint a composite or treated wood to match existing as well. And the roofing, we're going to be using a low-slope roof with a hot-mopped fiberglass membrane. Getting to the porch features, the main feature is going to be the gas fireplace. The existing gas fireplace currently opens up to the entry foyer slash, it could be, they're using, it's basically just an entry foyer, but it could be like a living room as well. But, so basically, they found the location, it's just unnecessary to have a fireplace there. They were actually considering even removing it at one point. But rather than removing it entirely, we're proposing to modify the fireplace to allow operation and access from the exterior side. This approach enhances its usability and ambience while preserving the original feature of the home in a more purposeful way for the homeowners. And then another feature would be the large sitting and dining area. One of the primary reasons for extending the existing covered porch was to create sufficient space to accommodate a dining table for family gatherings while also giving enough clearance for the fireplace. And then just get, just touching on some of the lighting. My plans, I was considering putting, you know, we were going to have a downward-facing sconce lightings around the stairs for safety reasons, as well as a couple around the barbecue in the kitchen. But though, I think I have, it's just four, four along the back, the rear. The rear steps leading to the backyard and two at the barbecue.
And those lights will be downward directed so they don't affect the adjacent neighbor?
Yep.
That's right, thank you.
And then for the porch lighting, we will be using LED high-hats, recessed high-hats. And we were also going to put those on a dimmer switch to create a flexible, more like ambient atmosphere. And then all exterior bulbs, we would like to use, you know, LEDs within the Kelvin range of 2,700 to 3,000 to ensure a warm, inviting light. And the access to the porch, I believe Amanda already talked about, but I'll just briefly mention, it, it'll basically remain unchanged with entry points in the existing front steps, the existing side steps, and the reconstructed rear steps leading to the backyard. We're also proposing the installation of a new door that will provide direct access to the covered porch by repurposing the location of an existing window. And then getting to the patio and barbecue, we are proposing the construction of 130-square-foot outdoor barbecue kitchen area in the location of an existing oversized concrete slab, which is currently accommodating a condenser unit. The slab occupies a large portion of space directly adjacent to the home and will be proposing to be removed to make for a functional and appropriate outdoor feature. Placing the barbecue area in this location allows the kitchen to privately be tucked away out of sight from the street while also offering the practical benefit of close proximity to the kitchen's drain line for efficient plumbing connections. And then just a couple of features of the patio. We have a built-in gas grill for convenient and efficient outdoor cooking, an integrated sink, providing access to water for food preparation and cleanup, and a large island to accommodate both food prep and bar-style seating. And in summary, I believe this project honors the architectural heritage of both the existing home and the surrounding district while introducing thoughtful exterior improvements that enhance overall safety functionality in family living. By balancing historic preservation with practical updates, the design reinforces the home's long-term value and continued relevance. It respects the past without compromising present-day needs, ensuring that Weems' family enjoy a home that is both enduring and livable. Thank you.
And in your opinion, this will be consistent with the neighborhood, correct?
Yes.
And the architectural style of the wall itself?
I do.
Understood. And we talked about making it smaller, we discussed that. And with the HVAC densers, where is that going to be moved to?
Yeah, so we were, there wasn't a whole lot of other spaces that made a lot of sense, but trying to remove them from that location where the bar was did make sense. And I think the most, the best place is where we're proposing, along the west side of the edge of the porch. In this location, the condensers are going to be directly adjacent to the backside of a garage, detached garage, which, you know, there's, has no occupancy, or people living in there.
Do you think any part of this project will have a negative impact on the neighbors?
I don't.
How about the master plan or the zoning plan?
No.
Okay, thank you. And with that, I don't have anything further from Mr. Alaka.
Great, thank you, Ms. Wolf. Board experts, questions for the architects?
I guess a few observations and maybe any questions? So the increase in floor area ratio is attributable going to the screen-in porch, is that accurate?
Yes.
So the addition is primarily for the porch area, no interior living space?
That's correct.
And the entirety of the addition is one-story in height?
Yes.
And then finally, I know you explained why the porch, as observed from the front of the house, has a certain width. Did you offer an explanation for the depth as well? Being front to back?
Front to back.
As far as, again, justifying the size, I know you kind of touched on it, but just help us out.
Oh, gotcha, yep. Yeah, so basically, basically being able to fit the table within... Yeah, are you, I'm sorry, are you talking from like the...
So like if you're looking at it from the side, so from the front, you talked about trying to maintain the rhythm, the spacing of the posts. Again, I don't know if there's any architectural reasons, I guess, for, you know, as it relates to the existing house, why you would want it at a certain depth or...
Gotcha. Yeah, so basically, if you're looking at the existing floor plan, we really didn't want to touch too much of... We kind of wanted to leave those existing stairs, on the side stairs, I guess we could call them. So we're, you know, we're hoping to keep as much of that framing as possible. So with that being said, the plan was always to keep the porch from north to south distance aligned with the existing building footprint. Mainly because also to, to be able to control the rainwater, the roof, the roof slope, and that kind of thing as well. But I would say, yeah, we didn't want to, we didn't want to come too, we want to keep the, keep the face of the screen and porch aligned with the existing exterior wall. And I think that helps keep the depth, which is also translates to the other side, the other elevation, I think, which is what you're asking.
Like balance, is that a word?
Yeah, yep.
The existing porch is also the same size, it's just exactly the length of the existing porch?
Yes, yeah, the existing porch is the same size.
If you're going to testify, please just speak into a microphone, thank you.
So existing porch extends that length?
Yeah, yep.
So you're aligning with the, the first setback of the house, right? There's a, on that side, the house steps at that point. It goes back further away from the lot line, and you're trying to align with that first...
That's correct.
Set, okay, great.
I'm trying to bust your chops, just trying to look for justification for the building coverage.
No, absolutely, I understand.
That's it for me, thanks.
All right, thank you, Tom. Questions from the board for this witness?
Oops, sorry. Just, if you look at the combined side yard, understanding column width and keeping, you know, that balance. But if you're looking at it from the front, you have a pretty sizable tree that's like right in front of that.
Yeah.
Are you actually going to see that, and how did you think about that extra foot and a half?
I have looked at, I was looking at it for a while, a lot of photos from the front, and I did contemplate that as well. But I really do think it is going to be quite noticeable. The tree does block a lot of the view, but you can still get... The tree does block a lot of the view, but you can still get a pretty good understanding of that. It's just kind of like, naturally, I think, will draw your eye to it, and not in a good way, almost like an eyesore to the really nice, like, you know, balanced, the language of the dwelling. But I think that's a good question, I definitely did think about that as well.
And that tree will be preserved, correct?
Yes.
Those are pretty unbelievable trees, those two.
Yeah. It's pretty cool being underneath them, too.
Mr. Nelson? Just a couple of silly questions. What is a GFI WR? I know what GFI is, but what's WR?
Just like, like weather resistant, within a box.
On the floor? Or in the ceiling?
On the floor. Or potentially attached to the columns or?
Because I see them in the center of the screened in porch.
Oh, you know, that's for the lighting.
So you're, so there's going to be more than a table in there?
That's just for the recessed light. I included the, the ceiling lighting on that floor plan as well.
Okay. And has there been any consideration about the, is the proposed outdoor kitchen covered?
No.
There's no, there's no intention of covering that?
No.
Okay. And then I'm a little curious as about the, how close is, how close is the wall mounted TV to the person, the house behind the property?
A little over thirty feet to the property line.
Good. Great. Questions from the audience for this witness? Please.
So, in my hearing, in hearing that's, one of the hopes from the family is that the grass area was going to be extended for the children, but yet I'm also hearing there's this hundred and thirty square foot barbecue area. So how does that then?
Yes, I understand. So that, the barbecue is going to be, is not going to be located in the, in the rear yard? It's going to be, and I know you probably don't have a drawing to look at, but it's?
Next to the porch?
It's directly next to the porch, yeah.
Oh, thanks. Okay, thank you. Okay. Got it. Got it, got it, got it. And I had a fence question, but is that not, not appropriate for the architect?
You could ask.
So I think it's more of a Mr. Clark, but I just wanted to ensure, would I be right in assuming that the style of fence is going to be replicated when you are replacing it?
I believe it'll be the same fence, just moved back.
Yeah, we hadn't really discussed that, but it would make sense if the, if the panels are intact to try to reuse as many of those panels as possible.
But should they not be in good enough shape? Would it be?
Then you wouldn't replace in kind, so let's say half of them weren't in good shape, and then the other, there were a few sections that weren't, they would, it would match.
Yes. That's what I'm asking. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Just real quick again, Mr. Clark. So Mr. Clark pointed to where the barbecue patio was. Is that different than what's on our plan? Is it alongside the, to the right of the rear steps?
No, so the, yeah, the plan I have is the plan you have.
Okay.
And so it's, it's in this knob of the house.
Okay, I'm sorry, you made a big circle, so it wasn't.
It's like, it's like an L shape. You see there, that's the, that's the outdoor kitchen part.
Yep. So, no more questions from the public? Oh, you have one more, please.
Yeah, I'm so sorry.
Just do me a favor, state your?
Nancy Amster Cool, sixteen roofed in Place, right around the corner. So the other thing was, I noticed that one of the City of Summit staff comments was that the construction of the porch would greatly reduce the water absorption and availability. So is anything being done because of the additional coverage now to help with the rainwater absorption? Who's addressing that?
That's a good question for Mr. Clark.
I think that the comment you're referring to was in Mr. Linson's report, the forester's report. And his, his, the context for his commentary was that because of where the porch is, and it's going to be a little bigger than the existing porch, that some of the rainwater won't hit the roof structure the same way, and also that we need to be careful with the construction. So he's, he's mainly concerned with preserving the tree, but we're going to continue the runoff situation, so I think the tree's going to get plenty of water from the discharge of the roof area that's going to go to the planning beds at the base of the tree. I don't think, I don't think it's going to cause a deterioration of the tree itself.
No, I'm not speaking to the tree, I'm speaking to the fact that the neighborhood in general has a high water table, and that the property, as you mentioned, forty-three Franklin Place, already has a large percent of that property paved because it is now used as an after-school facility. So that my concern with the additional patio porch, that the rainwater absorption would be adversely?
Well, actually, we're, we're reducing the hard impervious surfaces on the property, though. So normally, that type of concern rises when you're increasing the coverage, when you're increasing the lot coverage and the hard surfaces. We're reducing that slightly by about two hundred and twenty-six square feet.
With the additional paving of the driveway and the addition of the barbecue patio?
Yeah, so we're, the reduction comes from the restructuring of the patio in the back, removing most of that patio and turning that back to grass. And then there's sort of a trade-off on the porch, because some of it is existing porch and deck that's there. We're just going to reconstruct with this porch, pea gravel, patio's coming out, some of the walkways coming out. So in total, and then pulling the five feet in from the, on the driveway, all those things together have a bit of a reduction of the, of the hard coverage.
Even paving from the street to the five-foot buffer?
Yeah, I mean, the driveways are already considered coverage, so that's already lot coverage.
But it's gravel at the moment, and you're paving, so you're, it's a different surface.
Right, and we're going to have some curbing on the back and then reduce the length of the driveway, so that's being reduced a bit.
Right, but the surface formatting is now being altered. Gravel's much different than a paved surface.
Yeah, I mean, it, it, it can be, depending on how long the stone has been there and how compacted it is. That's actually an issue in the ordinance, but they switched treating stone the same as pavement, as lot coverage some time ago.
Who is they?
They, the City of Summit and the engineering and planning mechanisms.
Okay. All right, thank you, that was my question.
Thank you.
All right. Ms. Wolf, do you have a summation?
I actually, one more witness.
Oh, okay.
Kate Keller. I'll be fast.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
Please state your name.
Kate Keller.
Do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. And if you could just give a brief record of your qualifications?
Sure. Hi, my name is Kate Keller. I'm a principal at the firm of Phillips Price Gregolany Keller LLC, based in Hoboken, New Jersey. I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey, my license is valid, and I have been licensed since about, oh, about eleven years now. And I've testified for about a hundred boards across the state, including this board several years ago.
Great, welcome back.
Thank you. Thank you. Yes, so I will, I will be brief, you know, but I just want to make sure that we get some planning testimony on the record because we do have a D variance here tonight. So, you know, I think that you've heard excellent testimony from our other witnesses already, so I'm not going to reiterate too much, but essentially, we are here because we are seeking to proposing a new porch expansion that triggers a D four floor area ratio variance. This is because how the ordinance in Summit specifically defines that, to quote it, enclosed or screened in porches shall be included in the residential floor area calculation. So obviously, that's how we are here tonight. This is a site that is developed with, as you heard, an existing single-family home that was built circa eighteen eighty. It was previously two-family at some point, it's been one-family for a while, and the applicant, as you've heard, is intending to keep it as such. It's located on Franklin Place, it's located in what's really, it's a residential area, but there's a bright mix of uses, a mix of different typologies in the vicinity. And this is, you know, just has frontage on Franklin, Franklin Place, excuse me, and is, you know, really nice looking home, if I may say so myself. So, you know, we're here tonight for that, and this, this board is aware, the board is allowed to grant variances to permit increase in permitted floor area ratio per the MLUL at section forty fifty-five D seventy-four. This is less of a burden of proof than a D one variance, essentially per the Randolph Town Center case, the applicant has to demonstrate that the site can accommodate the greater amount of floor area that's permitted by ordinance. We also have to address the negative criteria, variance can be granted without substantial detriment to the public good, substantial impairment to the zone plan and zoning ordinance. In addition, we also do have a few C variances that are here, that we're here for. Most of those have been, have been addressed already, so I won't spend too much time on any of this, but I think a lot of these are actually all related. So in terms of the D four variance, we are out of, this is a zone, the R five zone, where thirty-five percent is permitted, thirty-eight percent is currently existing, and thirty-nine point four percent is proposed. This is really a difference of about a hundred and twelve square feet. In my opinion, you know, the site can accommodate this proposed minimal additional floor area ratio, it's not changing the use of the property, it's the location of the improvements are such that there will not be, there will actually be a positive visual impact, as you've heard from our architect. And I think in the context of the surrounding use, especially with the, with the type of properties in that vicinity, this makes sense. I would also note, you know, in, this, this was specifically designed, as you heard from our architect, to keep it in the historic context of the house. And in the staff reports, we did have a letter from your HPC that, you know, stated that this was an appropriate and contextual addition to the property. And so I think that that is, you know, that, that's something that was important to the homeowner, important to the architect and the team, and so it's nice to see that your HPC agrees with that. But, you know, basically, you know, we look at floor area ratio, you want to make sure that the house doesn't get too massive, it doesn't get too bulky in volume, and I think just as, as part of the definition of what this is, it's a screened in porch, you're going to avoid a lot of those situations. It's going to, its appearance and its use are going to be more similar to an open porch than an enclosed interior room. And as Mr. Barron's asked the applicant before, that's their intention, is to only keep it as a screened in porch. It's not going to have HVAC, it's just going to have U electric service, as was testified too. So, yeah, so it's really intended to be part of the flow of the overall indoor/outdoor use of the house, just really keeping in, you know, what, what families want in a modern lifestyle, and taking this home that was, you know, hundred and, almost a hundred and fifty years old, and really adapting it thoughtfully to, to meet the needs of a modern family. So, you know, in that context, I think that this is, this site can absolutely accommodate the proposed floor area ratio. You heard about how we're reducing the impervious coverage, we are slightly increasing the building coverage, but again, I think that the fact that we can decrease the impervious coverage at the same time shows that the site can accommodate the proposed increase. And, you know, just to address some of the, before I move on to the negative criteria, just to address briefly the C variances, we do require a C variance for the side yard setback. That is, the required is thirty-three percent, it will now be thirty point six percent, and this is a function of the fact that, you know, the, this is really the only side of the property that, that has the porch on it. The size was, was chosen to accommodate the, to match the width of the property and to, to make sure that it, it keeps the existing architectural patterns from the outside. I think that the, the width that will be remaining in the side yard is appropriate, especially given the fact that it's next to only the side of a garage, you know, windows, it's on a living space, and will maintain light air and open space. So the only other, the only other non-conforming, pre-existing non-conformities we had talked about in our, we had identified were the shed and the fence, which will be eliminated. Those will all be moved to be conforming. And we still have an existing non-conformity for the location of the driveway along the side yard. We are, we are going to reduce, remove the pavement in the back to make that conforming at five feet and install landscaping as required by ordinance. So, you know, this is really an existing condition, it's a function of this being an older home and with a narrow driveway on that side, and so nothing is proposed to change there. So just in terms of advancing the purposes of zoning, I think that what we're proposing here promotes the general welfare. Their applicant is going to improve the property, they're going to make a, maintain and enhance the streetscape, and really make it more functional for their family and for their enjoyment of the site. It also will eliminate these existing non-conformities, as I mentioned, while decreasing impervious coverage and managing to balance all the stormwater needs. We're going to have appropriate light air and open space for the reasons that I mentioned. This screened in porch is a lot less, the massing of it is not the same, in my opinion, visually or feel as it would be if this were a fully enclosed room. And finally, purpose I promotes a desirable visual environment, and I think our architect gave wonderful testimony on that, so I will, I will take that into my record as well. So, yeah, I think that overall, this is a very thoughtful design. And just to briefly address the negative criteria for both the D and the C variances, in my opinion, this would not result in substantial detriment to the public good, surrounding area, or the city. It's a modest expansion of an existing residential home. And just to quote the, in this sort of context, just to quote what the HPC letter said, proposed plan matches the architectural elements of the existing home and extends the porch with a consistent aesthetic. So they're taking, they're doing that, they're taking this as an opportunity to decrease impervious coverage and rectify non-conforming conditions. I think the bottom line here is that there will be no negative impact on neighboring properties, particularly due to the small change, the changes that we've addressed tonight that the board has accepted. And similarly, I don't see any substantial impairment of the intent and purpose of the zone plan. This is an R five zone where the single-family use is permitted, and the goal of this zone is to maintain this type of property, just as is being proposed here. So, you know?
There's one more variance, I think, the lack of a garage.
I was just going to bring that up.
Okay, thank you. I did see that, yes, thank you.
And that's a pre-existing?
Yeah, so that's pre-existing, so essentially, the City of Summit requires every residential dwelling to have an enclosed garage space. This house, due to its age, was not constructed with one, and one was not built in the interim. You know, and I, the rationale here is that for why it's required, the variance is required is because the FAR is being slightly extended. However, what's, what's being proposed here won't increase the parking needs of the site, even with the small changes to the driveway that are being proposed, there's ample room in there for parking, for movement, for turning. And I think that continuing this existing condition, especially given the historic character of the site, will not have any negative impact on, at anyone compared to what is there today. So that is, that's about it. So, you know, in, in my opinion, I think that this is a well-thought-out project that takes a dwelling that has, you know, it's located in a great location right off of the, the walkable, right off of the downtown area, and this family is looking to invest in this for the long term. So, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Tom?
Yeah, just a couple. Good to see you again, I feel like we've been seeing each other a lot lately.
Yes, hey, Tom.
Regarding the garage, so it's existing, existing condition, but in addition, the floor, increase in floor area is not really living space, right?
Exactly.
In bedrooms.
Exactly. Yes, and, and also, I know that, that there was some comments in the letters that this previously was a two-family house, which obviously it's not anymore.
I don't know how I came up with that. I did notice that it's too electric.
It was, it was, until about twenty fourteen, it was a two-family house, so. You're not, not totally off. But so, you know, I think it's still going to be single-family and just no, no real increase in living space.
I, I think technically, you need variances for the driveway setbacks still, so?
On the side.
On the sides.
Yes. Yes. And that, that, that's not being changed because the majority of the driveway is already fairly narrow, and so we're trying to keep it for safety purposes.
And as far as the C variance, really, are you bundling these as C two public benefits?
Yes, yes, everything, all of these are C two, there's no existing hardship on the property, except obviously, you know, if you look at the existing home, which does have some non-conformities, but the lot itself, there's no hardships, these are all C two, and in my opinion, the benefits, as stated, outweigh any detriments associated with them.
All right, thank you. And just a comment for the reason why that the enclosed porch is considered FAR. Historically, I know Chris Anderson used to allow for screened in porches to be fully enclosed, the idea being that they're kind of enclosed already, so just to formalize that in the ordinance, so when somebody does do that, and eventually, over time, that sort of creeps and becomes enclosed.
Yes.
So when an applicant does that, and the board recognizes what they're proposing, and, and again, they're proposing only a screened in porch, fully appreciate that, but that's the reason why it's that way in the code.
Okay.
Just a little historical context, I have no further.
That helps, thanks, Tom. Anything for this witness? Okay.
Great, thank you.
Planner on planner conversation.
I'm going to open it to the public.
All right. So questions from the board? All right, so questions from the board for this witness? Seeing none. Questions from the public? All right, with that.
I will waive my closing because I think the board heard some very in-depth testimonies. So with that, I would turn it over to the board and request that you grant approval for our request to release.
Perfect, and before we do that, I'll just ask if there's any comments from the public. Seeing none, okay, we'll now go into executive session. Who wants to begin?
I will.
Allison, please.
I really like this application. I think it's very modest. I think it's adding all things just to make more family space. A lot of the stuff makes so much sense to bring the, everything, everything, the whole thing, just enhancing the beauty of the house and making it more livable. And I just, you know, I like that you're not, you know, trying to add bedrooms, bathrooms, etc., which a lot of people do. But thank you, this is, this is great. I think it's just adding more family space, so I can support it.
Thank you.
Excellent. Don?
Yeah, listening to everybody testify here, testimony, whatever you want to call it. The positives definitely outweigh the negatives. It's going to beautify the house, make it look a lot better. If you want to use beautify as a word, that's fine. And I like the fact that you're working with a neighbor, that, you know, resolving an issue. So that's, to me, that's kind of important. The only downside that I think can think about, and this was, we had this earlier, is no garage. And, you know, when the kids get older and the toys end up in the yard and sleds and bicycles and now electric scooters and all that kind of stuff wind up in the yard, you're going to wish you had a garage. But that's neither here nor there, so I can support this application.
Great, thank you. Mr. Carr? Anything? No?
Yeah, I mean, I can support this, I think. I'm always happy to see when these older homes are preserved and maintained, so I can support this.
I too can support this. I know, building off of your comments, that trying to do any work to a historic home can be challenging, to say the least. And I think you've approached this in a very sensitive and impactful way. And I would agree completely with your planner's testimony. And it seems as though you've satisfied all our planning criteria and sort of met the standard, so to speak, in order for us to grant variances. So with that, I'll ask Zach to tell us any conditions and variances and then a number of votes required.
Okay, so the variances here are the floor area ratio, the combined side yard, lot coverage, the building coverage, the driveway side yard, and the garage variance. And then the conditions, standard conditions, compliance with the Board Engineers Memo. Screening on the porch will be maintained, that will be maintained. The shed and the fence will be made conforming. The driveway will be made conforming at least five feet from the rear property line and paved. And then as well as compliance with Mr. Linson's comments.
Do we also have, it's not going to be converted to living space, indoor living space?
I think that's, I had that under, the screen, the porch will be maintained, but I'll include that as.
Yeah, maybe just more specific. Okay, thank you, Zach.
No problem.
Can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Nicole, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Karen?
Yes.
Mr. Malley?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Chiefo?
Yes.
Mr. Tinchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Leukets?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good luck, guys. So with that, we're going to take a five-minute break and then we'll finish up the last case of the evening.
Let me show the straw. Soon as we get out, perfect. Our last case of the evening, Nine Stony Hill Court. All right, we're gonna swear you in.
Please state your names.
Jonas Carr.
Jack Landhut Carr.
Do you swear or affirm that this testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Tell us a little bit about your...
Sure. So, I'm born and raised in Summit, moved back five years ago, moved to Stony Hill Court. Moved here originally as a family of two, we're now a family of five, and we were looking to add on some space. And so, not changing the footprint of our house, we were looking to add over existing roof. And so, what we're looking to do is add a small office on the first floor, and then outside of that, a small balcony, and then to the second floor, just extend the size of the master closet and add a bathroom off of what's currently a guest room, but will become our sunroom.
Okay.
That's kind of the gist of it.
Great. Any questions from our experts for these witnesses? The board, any questions? None. Okay, any questions from the public for this witness? Yeah, if you want to wait for the architect, that's fine. All right, please.
Please state your name.
Hi, I'm John Genokio.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
And can you give us a brief record of your qualifications?
Yeah, so I'm a professional architect, I've been practicing for 20 years. Testified numerous planning and zoning boards across New Jersey and the Northeast as well.
Thank you.
Well, please, begin your testimony.
I'd just like to take this opportunity to thank the members of the City of Summit Zoning Board, as well as members of the public for hearing our request for relief as it relates to the required variances for Nine Stony Hill Court to permit our clients Hope and Jonas to build in addition to their home for their growing family. We appreciate Mr. Sneakus and Mr. Barron's description of the variances we require in their May 12 memorandum. A, a D variance for floor area ratio. As the R-15 zones maximum floor area ratio is 25%, and we are respectfully requesting consideration for 30.28%, an increase of 5.28%. And then B, for a C variance for the minimum side yard setback for the balcony over the existing garage, where we currently along the western edge of the property have 10.2 feet, and the current zone's minimum setback is 15 foot oh. The primary hardship that demonstrates how this subject lot compares to the surrounding lots is the fact that this existing 9,400 square foot lot is situated in a zone district with a typical and minimum lot size of 15,000 square feet. This increase of 5.28% of floor area ratio in a typical zone lot in this district would be 792 square feet. Whereas for this lot, we're only asking for 295 square feet of floor area so that our client can build for their family's future in the, as described, first floor office and balcony and second floor increase to the bedroom to have an additional in-suite bath. I can further go over the details of the plans a few would like, or I could just receive questions at this point.
If you want, yeah, if you want to walk us through the plans.
Sure. So, I have here in front of me the same drawings that you have. They are basically the A-100, A-200, and A-300 sheets. On the A-100 sheet, we have the architectural site plan, as well as the floor plans. And as Jonas had pointed out, for the first floor plan, we're increasing over top of the existing roof over the garage to include a balcony and a new office. And then, as that addition goes up, then above, at the upper level, we would be extending the rear yard-facing bedroom over top of the existing family room. And then, on top of part of that, on top of the new office, we would have a new bath with a shower and a lavatory and a toilet. And then, on the A-200, you can see in our elevations how that would conclude. Basically, in keeping with the nature of the house, it's a hip roof house. The addition would just conclude in a very contained, organic way. So, those are the main drawings as it relates to, you know, the addition. We also have the A-300 sheet, which is more of the details related to how that addition frames. There were some comments in the, you know, in the... Obviously, some of the clients I'd like to speak to, obviously, once we do have the permission to build this, will be definitely in compliance with the requirements for smoke detectors and fire rating at the garage, verifying that it's got the rated separation. And I think our details already call that out, too. Is there anything else?
Yeah. Oh, that's great. Board professionals, do you have any questions for this witness?
I guess just a few observations, maybe a couple comments. So, I think you mentioned that the increase in floor area ratio is, increase in floor area is 295 square feet, which amounts to 55 square feet on the first floor and 155 feet on the second floor.
Correct.
So, the space is distributed between two floors.
Correct.
And the side yard setback variance that we flagged, I was kind of unsure whether or not to apply it. Basically, it amounts to a balcony taking place of the garage roof, where it sort of overhangs. I thought that it technically might require variance. It's within the footprint of the existing building, but because it's occupiable space, again, it's outdoors. It really is just, instead of a roof, there's a ramp. That's the difference.
Okay.
And so, the statutory test, as you heard from the previous application with respect to the floor ratio variances, whether or not the site can accommodate the additional bulk that results from the additions in your testimony that the site can endure, and it's within keeping of the existing character of the house, surrounding neighborhood.
Exactly.
Feel free to elaborate. But, yeah, I don't have much. I'll just again acknowledge that the addition is above existing portions of the block.
Board members, questions for this witness? Seeing none. All right. Mr. Jafar, do you have a question for this witness?
No, just a lot of comments.
Oh, just comments only. Okay, no problem. Any other questions from the audience, then? Seeing none. Okay, great. Is there anything that you would like to say in summation?
No, I don't think so.
Yeah, I'm not sure what to add without any questions that I might be qualified to answer, which I'm not sure of many, but I hope it makes sense.
Okay. No worries. Thank you so much.
Yep.
All right. Now, we will allow for comments from the general public. Yeah?
Hi, my name is Mortaza Jafar, J-A-F-A-R, and I live next door at Seven Stony Hill Court. Oh, I'm sorry.
No problem. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Yeah, I live next door at Stony Hill Court, which is adjacent to Nine Stony Hill Court. And, you know, first, I want to say I appreciate the notice and the opportunity to comment, and I understand the applicants have been working on this project for quite some time. And, you know, I'm not opposing the application overall. Our home at Seven Stony Hill Court is a one-story ranch, and the applicant's house is already two stories with the garage at grade level if you compare it to the level of our property. I don't know the exact terminology, but their garage entrance and our first floor is the same level. With the proposed additions to the first floor and the second floor, especially over the garage and the family room, we're just concerned about increased visibility and a potential loss of privacy along the shared boundary. And, you know, our hope is that some modest privacy screening, like some evergreen trees or similar landscaping, it could be considered to help maintain a reasonable buffer. You know, we've reached out to the applicants to suggest this, and, you know, we're open to working it out directly without, you know, bringing it to outside of this process. And, you know, I just want to thought respectfully raise this concern source on the record and, you know, to ask whether the board might consider encouraging a small privacy mitigation as part of the proposal.
Is that something you'd be open to?
We're not changing the footprint of our house. I mean, we're not touching any landscaping. Our house has a ton of landscaping around it already. Not saying we haven't thought about doing anything different, but it's not changing what we currently have.
Right.
I mean, we currently already have sun windows on the top floor that are children's, that are in this. We're not adding like a window or anything on the second floor there, so I don't... I respect your request, I don't really understand it.
I think you're suggesting that you get together at some point and see if there's maybe an opportunity. You're standing on the property, shared property line. You take a look and you see, maybe there's an opportunity to introduce some taller landscaping that maybe provides privacy to both sides. I don't know. I think that's what's being suggested here.
Yeah, I don't think we're opposed to the conversation. I think for us, we've been taking this in steps, so we've been working toward this for a while. And so, I think, obviously, we've tried to get together, but haven't been able to over the last week and a half. But, I mean, ultimately, like, we're taking it one step at a time.
Sure, of course.
Without knowing what the work entails. I think the only thing that I think Hope's trying to express is we have windows on that first floor that look out, which are similar to exactly where the balcony would be. And then, we also have windows on the second floor that also look out the same direction. So, understand it, not opposed to it, but also don't know what the result of this ultimately will be that would differ from the existing, basically, view of, I guess, inside the house.
Well, I think that's just perhaps a conversation worth having with your neighbor onsite, looking to see if there's any solutions there that you both come up with.
Yep.
And we did agree to have a conversation with him. Jonas was just traveling, he actually just flew back right before the meeting.
No worries, that's fine. Totally fine. Mr. Jafar, is that...
Yeah.
Work for you?
Okay. I'd be looking out for them.
Okay, great. Excellent. Thank you so much. Any other comments from the public? Nope?
About Resda. Just a visitor. But a big fan of soccer. Especially the Elvis club.
We'll get you there soon.
Although they still serve dinner.
Mr. Chairman, is there any screening there now? Are there any trees or anything?
Yeah. There are trees all around the whole property.
I got back into town late, too, so I wasn't able to drive by.
We did appreciate your staff comments that we received and we did the earlier review when the forester was out, and they approved their landscaping also.
So, I'm just a little unclear. Are you willing to work with your neighbor and put in screening if that's a difference here?
I think transparently, like, I don't know the cost of what we're talking about or what we're considering, so I think similar to before. I'm definitely not opposed to any conversation, but I also don't know what the result of this is that differs from that and then what we're talking about in terms of what the investment would be to do that at this point.
Well, I think your willingness to have that conversation is appreciated by the way.
For sure, yeah, definitely not opposed to it whatsoever.
Okay, great. So, with that, before we go into executive session, I'll ask Zach to let us know, conditions, variances, and votes needed.
Well, with the exception of the potential conversation between the neighbor and yourselves, I'm not sure if there was any other...
We're not going to condition it.
Yeah, I didn't think we were going to condition it, but okay. So, then, there were none other introduced, you know, the standard compliance with the Board Engineers Memo. Because there is a D variance here with the floor area ratio, it requires five votes.
Okay, great. So, let's go into executive session. Mr. Malay, what do you got for us?
I'm very familiar with this property, and I know the hardship you have with the topography and these steep slopes you have. And I think you will be doing a good favor for the Ashland Road with the nice and new balcony. And I think the historic, the commission said, commented on that feature as well. I think I do support your application. I think it's a good idea.
Great. Thank you. Mr. Carr?
I too think it's a thoughtful application. Also, considering, you know, the existing lot size is undersized for the zone. And, you know, if you took that into consideration, you may not be sitting here. And also appreciate the fact that you're willing to sit down and have a conversation with your neighbor. I can support it.
I can support it as well. I know it's very with the property and the slopes and all the other things you have to work around, I think, which is a very thoughtful application. I think it enhances the value of the house and enhances the value of the neighborhood. I can support it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
No, I can support it, too. At first, I didn't understand the balcony, but then I guess it kind of makes sense if you want to look to see who's coming in and out of the driveway. And I guess that it's a way to look out at that direction. But, yeah, I can support it.
Great. I, too, can support your application. I agree that there is a real hardship here, considering the undersized lot within the R-15 zone. The fact that you're willing to be constrained by your existing footprint and just build up from there, I certainly appreciate that. And understood, no promises being made, but the fact that you're willing to have a conversation with your neighbor, as I said before, that's something that this board always looks for and certainly appreciates. So, with that, can I get a motion to approve?
Soon.
Can I get a second? It's your hearing, thank you. Nicole, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Kiran?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Mr. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Chifo?
Yes.
Mr. Chanchuli?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Chairman Luegits?
Yes. Congratulations, good luck. Thank you. Do we have...
Oh, yeah.
Do we have... Oh, we have.
Everyone's packing up, I'm like...
No, no, no. We got paperwork. Nicole, I got this for you, too.
Thank you.
All right, don't go anywhere yet.
Oh, my God. See, you gotta turn it over. Okay, so resolutions for memorialization. We have zoning board application 242272, which is 15 Greenbrier Drive. The applicant requested C variances for steep slope to recreate their rear yard. The members that can vote are Mr. Kiran, Mr. Malay, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Yuko, Ms. Chifo, Mr. Nearing, and Vice Chair Zahn. Out of those members, can I get a motion to approve? Second?
Second.
Mr. Kiran?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Ms. Chifo?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Approved.
Okay, great. Perfect.
Next, we have zoning board application 242256. This is 47 Oakland Place. The members that can vote on this one are Mr. Kiran, Mr. Malay, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Yuko, Ms. Chifo, Mr. Nearing, and Vice Chair Zahn. Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
Moved.
Second? Anyone? Someone?
Second.
Second. Thank you.
I bet you don't want to leave.
Okay, motion second. So, Mr. Kiran?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Ms. Chifo?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
Approved. Minutes for memorialization. We have the February 20th, 2025 zoning board meeting minutes. The members that can vote are Mr. Nelson, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Feskins, Ms. Chifo, Mr. Kiran, Mr. Nearing, Mr. Yuko, Vice Chair Zahn, and Chairman Luegits. Can I get a motion to approve from one of those members?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Then, we have the meeting minutes for April 21st, 2025. The members that can vote are Mr. Kiran, Mr. Malay, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Yuko, Ms. Chifo, Mr. Nearing, and Vice Chair Zahn. Out of those members, can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Kiran?
Yes.
Mr. Malay?
Yes.
Ms. Chifo?
Yes.
Mr. Nearing?
Yes.
All approved, perfect. May 5th, 2025 zoning board meeting minutes. We have Mr. Malay, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Steiner, Mr. Yuko, Ms. Chifo, Mr. Feskins, Mr. Chanchuli, Mr. Nearing, and Vice Chair Zahn. Out of those members, can I get a motion?
Soon.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Perfect. Are we good to adjourn?
We're good. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Before we adjourn?
Yes, sir.
June 5th, we have a meeting. Is that correct?
That's, that was the... Yeah.
I said I could make it, but I can't. I cannot make it either. We'll have to discuss.
Do you have a quorum? Do you want to, at least with who's here?
I think we're going to try and figure out who can really make it.
Yeah.
That's for the church, right?
Yeah, because we kind of, that's a problem. Okay.
Yeah, it just had a conflict pop up.
Yeah, okay. I guess we will discuss that tomorrow with Mr. Ball.
And I think we're also meeting on the 9th, too?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Guys, we've got quite a week coming. Okay. Anything else? Motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Thank you.